It's Wednesday, January 11th, 2017, 9 o'clock, and we're in the Senator hearing room for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start that with a pledge of allegiance, so please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just a couple of comments. We start on a snowy Wednesday morning, not near as bad as the rest of the state. The north of us is bad, west is bad, east is bad, but here we sit, and we're fine. We may hear a little bit, the whole county isn't perfect in a second, but just remind people to be careful. Nobody has signed up for public comment. There's no presentations, so we'll get right to a consent item.
So, Mr. Chair, I don't know how I got the privilege of only having one item on consent, but it never happens to me. But I will move today's consent item, it's under Health, approve the contract for services with Kalen Dieter, M.D., for $815,000 to provide medical assessment and supervision of the adult behavioral health clients.
I'll second. All right, it's been moved, seconded, approved, or consent item this morning. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, a motion passes then. We do have a couple of action items. The first is, under Public Works, we consider approval of a grant agreement with the Oregon Military Department Office of Emergency Management in the amount of $152,068 for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. And Ed Flick is here. Ed, before you start on that subject matter, I would've been calling you anyway, happy to see you this morning. Could you give us a little update on what's going on in the county, in particular Detroit? Anything we need to know about?
Yes, Commissioner, Ed Flick, County Emergency Manager. I received an email yesterday from the Deputy Fire Chief for the Idana-Detroit Fire District, Jack Krill. Chief Krill indicated that he'd had discussions with both Detroit and Idana yesterday, expressing the district's concerns that the cities have not been able to maintain adequate fire access through the city because of snow. So, the letter that the district sent to the cities requested that they take measures to ensure the 16 feet adequate to get apparatus through the city. And in subsequent discussions between the district and the city of Detroit, at their meeting last night, the city council expressed a concern and wanted to let me know that they were considering an emergency declaration. I subsequently spoke to a city councillor for the city of Detroit, and we discussed the measures the cities are currently taking. Both Detroit and Idana have measures, they have contracts for snow removal at this time, but as the snow has continued to fall, that contractor's been unable to maintain the roads to a condition adequate for fire access. This is not like 2008, it's not sufficient load to worry about structures. They also haven't had trouble reaching their critical infrastructure. One problem in 2008 was getting Detroit access to their water supply to maintain an energy, natural gas pump there. That hasn't been a concern, so it's really just about keeping the streets open. I've got a meeting scheduled, I'll be departing here with both Idana, Detroit, and the Fire District at 11:00 to kind of review the situation with them, look at options, see what we may be able to do under mutual aid. And also, we'll review the conditions and triggers and process under which they would declare. And so, we'll leave that meeting with a good game plan moving forward, Commissioner.
Do you know if Public Works is doing anything up there at this time?
Not at this time. One of the limitations is, of course, the need to maintain other party routes. Another limiting factor is, through the nature of the streets, a lot of Public Works resources are large vehicles and trucks that aren't really suited for clearing municipal streets, so there's only three resources Public Works has that could be deployed there. But Public Works is prepared to do that, and that could in fact be what happens this afternoon. I'm also gonna talk to ODOT, they're well positioned there with their shop, and also being residents of the area and know the streets, so I'll explore those options. But a likely outcome, I would assess at this time, would be a declaration from both cities requesting county assistance to maintain roads through the weekend until the weather changes, again, for the purpose, really, of enabling fire access.
Okay. Any other issues around the county?
Yes, Commissioner, we had...
Go ahead.
We had a conference call between Salem Health and Marion County Public Health. There's an acute shortage of beds throughout the system, specifically both hospital beds and skilled nursing beds. There were a number of people waiting discharge at Salem on Monday to skilled nursing, and there was a shortage of beds to allow that to happen. OHA was involved in the conversation, and, not to get ahead of the Health Department, but the gist is, it's a statewide problem right now. In fact, we were just speaking about similar challenges in Portland and other systems. So, OHA's provided some input to the Health Department for public health messaging that I think will be seen soon. And also, we clarified some of the regulatory pieces with skilled nursing facilities for admission. So, it's something we're monitoring at this point, it's not an emergency, but it certainly is stressing the system.
All right. Well, let's get down to the business on this grant. You wanna get into that, please?
Commissioners, the item for your consideration is to receive our annual Emergency Management Performance Grant. The grant is about 18% less money than we got last year. Although the state received a level funding for this from FEMA this year, two factors caused this amount that we're receiving to be less. The first factor is, based on a formula that was established a number of years ago that manages the distribution of funds, more jurisdictions, specifically cities in Oregon, are taking advantage of Emergency Management Performance Grants. Additionally, and this is good news, there were counties in the east part of the state that previously had not had full-time emergency managers who have now hired them. And so, with those jurisdictions now subscribing, their allocation, the valuable amount for us went down. The other thing is, Oregon Emergency Management was able to match more and has taken their full amount that they're afforded, given this formula. So, with the 17% reduction, it represents almost $33,000 less federal income to my program.
One of the obvious questions, Ed, I'll just ask, so how do you make that up? What gets hurt, then?
The majority of the projects that my program is engaged in are funded through other federal grants, so we have a very small actual operating budget, which is currently a combination of general fund for one of our FTEs, and three of the other, the remaining three FTEs are funded through the 130 program, the road fund. The policy options at this point, it'd be very difficult for us to find the $33,000 from our materials and services. Those dollars we spend to do minor flood fight, maintain the emergency operations center, pay our subscriptions for communications and things like that. That's not to say we couldn't cut that back. Our ability to respond would be impacted. I've talked to the Public Works Director about pursuing a remedy to this through supplemental two, either from the general fund, which I recommend, or additional from our supplemental. As you know, the program is working more in an all-hazard way and doing work like the health work I mentioned earlier that sort of falls outside of the Public Works arena. And so, solving this with additional general fund would recognize the contributions, I think, we're making beyond Public Works.
Questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just find it amazing that in these days where we have... I know that our county and others, the city of Salem and others around us have been working really hard to prepare people for emergencies, and we all know that it's not you, Ed, or us, it's the individual that's prepared or not in that education process, and just find it very difficult to accept a reduction like this. But it is what it is, and, Mr. Chair, if you want to entertain a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the grant agreement with the Oregon Military Department Office of Emergency Management in the amount of $152,068 for Emergency Management Performance Grant.
I'll second it.
Case moved and seconded to approve the grant agreement with Oregon Military Department, $152,068. Any further discussion? Seeing that all in favor, then say aye.
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 Aye, a motion passes. All right, thanks, Ed, and keep busy. No, that's easy to do right now, isn't it?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next item is a consideration of a zone change, a comprehensive plan, case 15001 Coastal Forest Products LLC, Clerk's File 5704. Joe Fenimore, you're there with the big file, so...
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. The item before you today is an application to change the zone from exclusive farm use to industrial, to change the comprehensive plan designation from primary agricultural to industrial on 6.25 acres located on Portland Road Northeastern Salem. The property is the site of the former North Salem Drive-In Theater. A one-acre portion of the property, fronting on Portland Road, is zoned commercial, while the remaining 6.25 acres that are subject to the application is currently zoned EFU. The property contains a landscape supply business with retail sales being conducted on the western portion of the commercially zoned portion of the property, while the area proposed for the zone change contains bulk storage materials that are wholesaled. Properties to the north and south are zoned commercial and industrial, and contain trailer sales and a wrecking yard. Properties to the east and west are zoned EFU and in farm use. The hearings officer held a hearing on the application on August 5th, 2015, and on November 10th issued a recommendation that the board denied the request. In summary, the hearings officer found that based on information in the record at the time, an exception statewide goal three was not recommended, and that additional information was needed to satisfy goals six, air and water quality; goal 11, public facilities and services; goal 12, transportation; and goal 13, energy conservation. In addition, the applicant needed to show how the proposed use fits in the proposed industrial zone. Without the goal exception, the proposal does not meet the comprehensive plan policies and the zone change criteria. The board held a public hearing on the matter on May 4th, 2016. At the hearing, the applicant submitted additional information and testimony to address issues raised by the hearings officer. It included evidence that the previous development of the property as a drive-in theater prevents it from being farmed on its own or in conjunction with adjacent properties; a study showing that stormwater could be contained and treated; account on the amount of truck traffic that the use was generating; and a proposal that limited the use, that a limited use overlay be applied to make all other uses in the industrial zone subject to a conditional use permit. The board closed the public hearing and directed staff to work with the applicant to develop conditions for it to consider if the application was approved. The applicant and staff have agreed on a list of 10 conditions for the board to consider if their request is approved. They include condition one, a limited use overlay, that would require any other industrial use to first obtain a conditional use permit. Condition two, the business to be closed to the public between 7:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. to minimize noise impacts. Condition three, to meet all the development standards in the industrial zone regarding setback screening, those kind of items. Number four, require the applicant to submit within 45 days of approval an erosion control plan for review and approval, and once approved, implement the plan within 60 days. Condition five requires the applicant to submit within 150 days a stormwater drainage plan for the site, and within 90 days after its approval, construct the system. Item six requires the applicant to, within 30 days, coordinate with Public Works and ODOT for permits to realign the intersection of Portland Road and Lakeside Drive and construct improvements within 150 days after issuance of that permit. Item seven would require the applicant, within 30 days of obtaining permits, to realign the intersection to apply for permits to construct improvements on Long Lakeside Drive from Portland Road intersection to its driveway on Lakeside. The improvements include widening of pavement and restryping. Condition eight requires the applicant to, within 30 days, obtain the permit for intersection realignment, to obtain permits to improve its Lakeside driveway by paving at least 100 feet into the property. In lieu of the improvements on Lakeside Drive and its intersection with Portland Road, conditions six, seven, and eight, the applicant can implement condition nine that will prohibit semi-trailer tractors from accessing the driveway out on Lakeside Drive and require them instead to use the Portland Road access. If the applicant chooses condition nine, and then later decides to do the improvements to Lakeside Drive in the intersection, condition 10 outlines a timeline so that conditions six, seven, and eight would have to be done by an order, and prohibits the driveway, use of the driveway until they're fully complied with. The problem with the realignment of the intersection is, there's a power pole that would have to be moved, and the pole has lines going in four directions. All the lines would have to be dropped, they would have to condemn property, private property probably adjacent to it, to relocate the power pole. The cost at this time is prohibiting for the applicant. So, they propose this condition nine that would limit the truck access so that those large trucks aren't using Lakeside Drive driveway. The board has the option of approving the request with the recommended conditions or modify conditions, reopen the record for additional testimony, or deny the request. Staff recommends the board approve the request with the recommended conditions. And I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
And are there?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, just so I'm clear, Joe, there's conditions to improve Lakeside Drive. If they do all those conditions, they can use that access for trucks?
For the semi-truck.
Right, right. And I remember this, because we saw that's where they bring in the bark dust or the gravel or whatever for their semi-trucks. However, condition nine allows them not to make those improvements and not use that for a truck...
For large semi-trucks.
Semi-truck ingress and egress. So, that being said, where's the enforcement? And how many times, because we've been through this on some other issues that have not been... How do I say this? The conditions have not been followed or enforced by the applicant. So, what's the enforcement, what's the penalty if we go forward and approve this if they don't?
Well, initially, it'll be up to planning staff to make sure the conditions are satisfied in the timelines, in the timelines established. I've already talked to Kami in our office on them. Method to do that, we will use a separate tracking sheet and our email system and satellite appointments, so these dates that we have, we will know when they're coming up, and we can check with the applicant and make sure they're meeting these timelines. Once they're established and meet, get these permits and do this work, then it's the regular code enforcement that they're continuing to follow those standards.
So, I just, I wanna be, because the neighbors there are concerned about this, and obviously, we're trying to make sure our business can continue to do their business to the best of our ability here, but, again, is it one citation? And then, then we pull this permit, or is it two citations? Is it three citations? Maybe, Gloria, I don't know. Is this... So that the applicant knows the seriousness of following these conditions?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we would follow the normal enforcement process for this, which is usually multiple notifications and letters in the enforcement process to try and first get voluntary compliance. So, the first letter out is generally to try and get voluntary compliance. If you look at condition number nine, it appears that there's some physical constraints required that would prohibit the trucks, the larger trucks, from going in, and I don't know whether that physical construction would then reduce the likelihood that violations would even be issued.
Excuse me, Kevin, any more?
Go ahead, because I'm just reading what Gloria...
Right, so I gave Joe a heads-up before this meeting that I was gonna ask a question. It turned out to be very similar to the question you asked, because I am very concerned that we make the neighbors the planning police. And we've been doing that in Marion County for far too long. And as I was thinking about that, driving in this morning, about not only what do we do... So, I think we have processes in place, and maybe they haven't been as tight for people to actually put things in, although I can tell you that we've had meetings with Public Works about problems that we've identified, and maybe 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, well, there were conditions in the plan, but nobody followed them, right? So, we put them on paper, and then people just blew us off and didn't do it, and then all of a sudden, here we are, 30 years later, dealing with something that... And can't hold anybody accountable anymore, because the owner, developer's gone, the owner's different, you know, all of these kinds of things. So, I am really tired of making the neighbors the planning police on all of these different land use hearings. So, and I am also very tired of hearing from code enforcement, "Well, we gave them a citation, and they paid it, and figured it was a cost of doing business, and we gave them another one, and they paid it," and so on. Not on this one, but we just had one that we talked about that, I think, last week. So, we need a new system in Marion County to hold people accountable to these planning conditions. And I am not satisfied with the idea that we'll use our traditional process. So, I like, I don't want to hold this up, and I do think that I can tell... I don't know this for sure, I'm assuming, that the applicants worked really hard with the department to get these together, and they've given some in terms of what they wanted to do. And, but I know that those issues were real to the people that came and testified at the public hearing to us as well. So, I'm not suggesting that this particular applicant is going to be dishonest and blow us off and not do what he promises to do, because he seems like an upstanding guy, and I'm, but I'm just saying that as a rule, overall, we need a better process in Marion County, and I want us to work on that sooner rather than later. So, I'm just putting that out there.
I'm gonna ask Gloria what I'm thinking, although we're all feeling the same way. But, like a motion that said, you know, approval, but, that upon violation of any of these conditions, the matter will be brought back to the board with an issue of revocation of the conditional use. Something along that lines.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the board does have that option. Basically, with generally any of the applications, we have the right to take remedies, up to and including court action. We can follow the traditional enforcement process, but under the land use laws, you do have a right to address and remedy violations of your conditions. It's, so it would be a possibility to ensure that the conditions are being met, and if not, bring it back to the board to consider further actions. And there might be a number of options that would be presented to you at that time.
I just, I like the sound of it, I don't quite know how to do it, but I don't like the sound of, "Yeah, we'll send you a letter and see how that goes." I want, in all cases, I'm not picking on anybody here. In all cases, if we make conditions, I expect them to be followed, and if they're not, there has to be a consequence.
I'm making note of that, and it's a little bit different than traditional planning or enforcement violations, as opposed to, are you meeting the conditions of your approval in the first place and following through with the promises made for the approval?
And I would say, I mean, my guess is that because it's gonna be more expensive to do the work, they're gonna use the one that says they're gonna limit their use on that. So, then, on that road, on Lakeside Drive. So, if they promise to limit the use on Lakeside Drive, but we start getting reports that the use isn't being limited, and it... People have the best of intentions, but you got multiple drivers and people coming in, and they may not remember or know or whatever. We need to be able to say, "Hey," you know, that bets are off now, because you're not following what you promised to do.
Would it be better to be specific in this case and say that unless these actions are taken to upgrade it, that we've talked about, or happen, then that exit has to be closed to truck traffic, period? And then, if there's a violation, it's pretty easy to tell.
You could add another condition, definitely, yes. That says basically that. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I want to back up a little bit. I'm approaching this from, not from the applicant that's here today, I'm approaching this from other experiences, and I want to be really clear, it's not about this applicant, and it's not personal here. So, and I know we're all highly sensitive to this, because we've been dealing with this, where we put out conditions and people don't follow up with a condition. So, I think the applicants here, they've heard that we're serious about that the conditions are being met. I'm willing to take a leap of faith here that this applicant would, obviously, follow these conditions. I think it's, from what I understand, Gloria, you're just saying, "We could always bring this back," and a board motion to pull the conditional use permit.
There's a process for revocation to consider suspension or revocation of a permit.
Right. Which we can do on either, on any of them. Also, if you want to change the motion to be something different, but, certainly, I just wanted to be clear that this is not about what's facing us today, it's what we've been facing in the past, and, obviously, the people that are watching don't know about all those situations. We did hear about one yesterday at a breakfast that the neighbors are still concerned about, but we've closed down a particular operation because they weren't following their conditional use, and so, we've been able to take that action.
And that would be the similar type of actions we can take, the board can take.
I just wanted to be clear.
I appreciate that, thank you. John?
Mr. Chair, Gloria, does the Public Works Director have some authority to make sure that these conditions are met? I know that the Public Works Director had, on the other one they've been talking about, had some authority to make sure they were meeting the conditions, I think.
I do believe that the Public Works Director does have that authority. It becomes to be a workload and a budgetary issue in terms of having the staff to go out and follow up and actually make the checks and make the physical visits. It's a little different than something like building permits, where you have dedicated staff that go out and do that.
We will then be talking to the Public Works Director about that.
It has to become a priority, it just has to.
So, what would you like to do?
So, I'd need to know what to put in my motion in terms of the accountability piece. What can I put in my motion? So, I heard some general conversation, and you said you liked the sound of it, but I need something specific, I guess. So, can you reiterate, Gloria, what I might include in the motion?
It could be that failure to follow the conditions, the proposed conditions or the conditions outlined for approval will be subject, or may be subject to any and all legal remedies available to the Board of Commissioners.
All right. Just a minute. So, I will make a motion that, just a second, let me get back on the right page here. Oh, I've got it over here. Looking for the staff recommendation. That, okay, so I moved that the board approved the request in this zone change comprehensive plan case with the recommended conditions as outlined, and that we also include in our order, I guess, that, are there's gonna be an order? What's it gonna be?
Be an ordinance with exhibits attached.
Okay, in the ordinance, that failure to follow proposed conditions outlined for approval may be subject to any and all legal remedies available to the Board of Commissioners. I have that written down, if you need it.
All right.
And then, I would also state as part of the record that the board is directing John Latimer and Ellen Haley to work with planning on a specific process that we're gonna use to assure accountability and conditions in these types of cases.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chair, so that's a separate issue, right? Not in the motion. Not in the motion. Before I second the motion, I just want to make sure that, Gloria, what the Commissioner's motion is, it's in writing, but we have all those abilities anyways, right? I mean, stating those in the motion doesn't change our ability to exercise any kind of power that's within our power.
It does not. It is putting them on notice that it may not follow just a traditional complaint-driven enforcement process that, due to the seriousness of the Board of Commissioners, you might look at other options for quicker action.
Which we could do anyways, even if it wasn't in a motion.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll second the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Joe.
I think it's clear that staff is on notice that we're going to do a better job of watching these conditional uses, making sure they're being followed, and we will do that.
And I would add, and then letting the board know quickly if they're not and bringing it back so we can take action. Because these things just go into drift and it's just not okay.
All right. So, it's been moved and seconded to approve the request with the conditions as outlined and to make special notice of our concern and perhaps different measures. And then, Kristy, you're not here, but I assume it'll all be, the motion will be correct as stated. Any further discussion? I don't hear any of that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
It's approved. Thank you for your work, Joe, and always. All right. Well, we, I thought we'd be killing time to get to 9:30 for public hearings. Oh, was that what that was? Is that all it was? All right, we have two public hearings and they're rather similar. Joe, don't get comfortable because you'll be coming back under Public Works. I'll open this public hearing and it is to consider a special assessment of open space for case 16001, the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon Clerk's File 5720. And we do have a number of people that are signed up to speak. So, Joe, and if you'd introduce us with you and explain what's going on here for us.
For the record, Joe Fenimore, Public Works.
Rob Litter, Assessor's Office.
I don't see the applicant here at this time. I may be perhaps having some trouble, travel issues, I'm not sure. Once again, for the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you is an application by the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron Community of Oregon for special assessment of open spaceland on 430 acres in an EFU zone located on Deekman Lane, Southeastern Stateon. Under ORS 308A 300 to 330, county is required to process the request in the same manner as the Conference of Plan Amendment. As such, the matter was referred to the Marion County Planning Commission, which conducted a public hearing on December 6, 2016. The property is entirely, excuse me, the property is located west of Stateon, just outside the urban growth boundary, along the North Saniam River, is almost entirely in the identified flood plain, hundred-year flood plain of the river. Historic use of the property appears to be a mixture of farmed land and riparian vegetation. Various governmental agencies were notified of the request and given an opportunity to comment. No comments have been received. Determining whether to approve the application, there are three factors that must be considered. The first, in ORS 308A dot 3091, is related to comparing the value of preserving the lot as open space versus the cost and consequences that would be incurred when extending urban services to or beyond the property, or to have to expand the urban growth boundary to compensate for any reduction of available lands. In this instance, the property is located almost entirely in the identified flood plain of North Saniam River. It is very unlikely that urban services will ever be extended to or beyond the property unless the state UTP was extended to include the property. Based on this information, the costs and consequences on the extension of urban services or the available land inventory is negligible. In the second set of, the second set of factors is in 3092, and it prevents requests from being denied solely on the fact that there may be a potential loss in revenue. If it's determined that preservation of the open space will enhance or protect specific resources. The applicant indicates that designation will conserve or enhance natural and unique resources, protect air, streams, and water supplies, promotes conservation of soils, wetlands, and enhances the value to the public of a buddy neighboring forests, wildlife preserves, and other open spaces. The property has been receiving special assessment for farm use under the proposal and will be a special open space if this was approved. And I'll let Rob talk about the tax, the difference in tax revenue. Finally, in 3093, it states that the granting authority may approve the application with all respect to part of the land, and if that is the case, the applicant could withdraw the entire application. So, the board has the options of approving the request and grant the open space special assessment on the entire property, approve the request on a portion of the property, deny the request, or take no action at this time. The Planning Commission, after its hearing, recommended option one to grant the open space special assessment for the entire property and will be happy to try and answer any questions.
So, just to clarify, this is, we're not rezoning anything. This is zone, what is the property zone?
EFU.
It's the zone DFU. And so, we're gonna hear from the Assessor's Office about how taxes are applied in this particular instance, what this, what this means, right? But this is not a land use hearing in the sense that we're rezoning the property from anything it has been, anything different. So, the uses on the property that have been allowed in the past won't change under this new tax assessment.
That is correct.
Formula, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, that, just so I understand, Joe, I, that was my question, what would be the management of this? But you're, I was picturing a piece of ground that's just left as is to go wild and whatever and you're talking something quite different. This is actually farmed, perhaps, or?
It is now, it's going to be converted to open space. And the applicant will talk about that, he's here now, so he'll be able to explain in detail what the plan, long-term plan is for the property.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
I'm gonna wait. I've got a couple of questions, but they may get answered.
Based on the, Rob Litter, Assessor's Office, based on the change in special assessment, we have calculated that the grand total of all these parcels, seven tax lots, eight parcels, would result in a reduction of approximately $930 in taxes per year. And that's for all of the parcels.
All right.
Mr. Chair, could you explain kind of what open space assessment is as opposed to other types of assessment? Kind of go more into the details of that?
Open space is pretty rare in our county. We only have, I believe, eight parcels currently under the open space special assessment. What it is, is it's intended to add, add value to neighboring properties and therefore, some of the parcels you see are actually, that are on open space or on golf courses. It's also a way to preserve the air quality, the streams of the land. In order to value property under the open space, it has to be viewed as if its highest and best use is of open space, cannot be used for anything else, cannot be farmed or what have you, therefore, its value is limited in that case. And then, we apply a ratio that comes from the Department of Revenue to arrive at its assessed value. After that point, it basically follows the same rules as normal property in that it has its market value and then it has a special use value based on the open space.
Question for me, so, yeah, what is the existing, when you say we have a reduction in 930, what's the existing tax assessed value of the current property versus less than 930? Do we know that?
The current assessed value?
Right.
I don't know if I broke, I have it for the total for the two different cases, I didn't break it up for the one to the other. The total special assessed currently for both cases is $940,000. If I do quick math here, about half of that, so about $470,000 is attributed to these nine parcels, eight parcels, nine tax, nine accounts.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm, got lost there. So, you said there were seven tax lots and the reduction of the tax revenue on those seven tax lots was $930, correct?
That is correct.
How did you compute the 930? You subtracted something from something.
We have, we have the current special use values that are already estimated for the upcoming tax year. We computed what we believe the value is gonna be under the new open space.
Yeah, those are the two values I'm looking for.
And then, the ratio, so, so, on, there's a inclusion on your, what, the packet you're given, there's the first page that's kind of a summary. So, for instance, the first parcel, account number R34839, its assessed value will actually go up from this. It will go from $220 to $1,260. If we go down to account 34947, its assessed value is currently gonna be $15,740. It would be reduced down to $5,310 by going onto the open space.
Okay, so, so then, that follow-up question, I guess, I would have, are those property values that are going up in taxation, are they owned by the same person who's applying for this particular open space?
They are, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, then you'll be back perhaps, Joe? And now, if I could, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name, if the applicant would come forward, introduce yourself, please, and go ahead and tell us what you'd like to.
Well, thank you and good morning. My name's Michael Karnasch and I'm the Seated Lands Program Manager for the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron. I apologize for my tardiness this morning. Just to give a little bit of background on this property, the tribal name for it is Chahalpam. It means place of the Saniam Kalapuia people. It's part of the original homelands of the Kalapuia people that are a member tribe of the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron. The property was purchased in 2013 from the Gray family and it was purchased through the Willamette Wildlife Mitigation Program that's funded by BPA. As a condition of that BPA funding, the BPA took back a conservation easement on the property. So, the property is owned and managed by the tribe and it must be managed under an approved management plan for wildlife habitat.
Well, I'll just ask my question, and I was trying to get at it earlier, so what does that management look like? Will there be active farming there? Do you just leave it and let it overgrow and tell us what it ends up like?
Absolutely, thank you. Currently, it's being farmed, almost all of it is, is in ag production. It's under the management plan, it's planned to be phased out over time. I believe there's currently 11 ag fields in the property and each year, starting next year, one or two of those fields will get converted back to native vegetation. What that looks like is it'll, it'll simply stopped, stop being farmed and it'll be planted with a species mix, native riparian trees and also some native brush and forb species. But it'll still be actively managed. In fact, the first priority for that property is control of invasive vegetation. There is some Himalayan blackberry on the property as well as a small amount of Scotch broom. Those, that, the main reason why it's continuing to be farmed right now is to keep those invasive species out and farming it actively does a very good job of keeping those invasives out. But that's, as soon as the trees, the native trees are planted and free to grow, the management will slowly, over time, become less aggressive. Once the invasives are under control, that control will be less aggressive, but it will be actively managed in perpetuity by the tribe. There'll be some, you know, active thinning of the area, there'll be some mowing in certain areas, so it will continue to be actively managed.
Can you picture impacts or problems with neighboring farm operations in particular or even residential properties? Can you, could that happen or?
Not under the current management scheme, no. There's, there's a revetment on the riverbank of the property, so that property and the neighboring properties only flood at extremely high river stages. And I would think as far as invasives control, the neighboring landowners would probably appreciate the tribe's efforts at keeping invasives out.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Anything else you'd like to say, Michael?
Just thank you for this consideration and the property, as the property that we're going to talk about, I believe, next, the two properties mean a lot to the tribe and it's, it's a great honor to be able to continue to manage those.
All right, thank you. You may, you have the opportunity to come back, we have a little bit of testimony if you want to make some comments on those after. But for right now, we'll get into the other testimony. First, I, just for the record, we received one written from Ed Dunham in Stateon and I've read it, I'd summarize it, it's not.
Is he signed up to?
Is he? No, he's not signed up to speak.
She's saying this is for the next, no, it's for the next case, okay, they're rather similar, we'll just put that off. Then, we have three people signed up, apparently all in support, and if you would come forward and to where Michael was sitting and introduce yourself and then go and make your testimony, it's fine if you're not, but Pam Pritchard is first, are you Pam?
Doesn't matter, just introduce yourself, please.
I'm Pam Pritchard, I'm the daughter of the landowner that owns 18 acres, kind of a pie-shaped portion on the river to the east of this property. And I just want to say that myself and my parents are in support of this application that we're very excited with, about working with the tribe on things such as invasive species control. We feel like this is gonna, we feel like this is going to add value to what we do with our land. Also, our land has been in the family for a number of years. My family owns a number of pieces of land in the area and within a few miles were my parents, my father's homestead. And so, we were familiar, my grandparents were familiar with the Saniam Indians when they came through that area at different parts, times of the year. And so, we're aware of the historical nature of this application and, and the importance of the fishing to the Indians and hunting and, and the land, the use of, the sacredness of the land. We're excited about them being able to reclaim this property, bringing more influence of the tribe back into the area.
Okay.
Our relatives were friends of the Saniam Indians who are now part of the Grand Ron Tribe.
Thank you. Now, both Ellie and William have signed up to speak, do they wish to?
I think we signed up in support.
Yes.
And we, what she said, we agree with.
If you're gonna go any further than I would like, you come to the microphone. Go ahead, please come up. Thank you, Pam.
Well, my husband's parents and grandparents found Indian relics that were under the ground when they harvested crops and, and they got in touch with the Indians and gave them the relics and so, the history of the Indians and, and my husband's family goes way back. And as a conservative type... And as a conservative type person, I love the idea that we will keep some land there, uh, the way it was. And, uh, instead of just everything being farmland or, or buildings. So we really approve of what they're going to do, and we wanted to come and just tell you that we support that because our land is adjacent to part of their, of the, of the land in question now.
Thank you. And William, would you like to say anything more? All right, thank you. I thi- I think we get the message, and your family's, uh, much in favor. All right, there's no one that's, uh, s- uh, signed up in opposition. Would anyone else like to make some testimony on the subject? Michael, any, anything different that you'd like to add? And then Joe, perhaps you'd come back and we'll, we'll move on. Anything you could add right off, and then I'll just ask for questions.
Not at this point. I'm here to try to answer questions.
And the, do Mr. Chair, thank you, if I may, and, and this goes back to the assessor's office, I think. On our materials, I'm trying to understand, again, the, uh, this is the case number sixteen zero zero one, which we're on, the estimated change in assessed value. By opening the page you gave us, I, hopefully you have that in front of you. It's in our, our document. When I look at the column on the right, you have that page that I'm referring to?
I do, yes.
So I look at the column on the right, and it says estimated change in taxes. So it's only the highlighted blue, uh, above the line that are impacted by this particular, uh, section. That is probably where I'm confused, because there, when you go down below, it says there's a negative thirty-five hundred and sixty-one dollars. That's the next case that we're gonna talk about?
That's actually the total of both cases. So the, you're, you're correct that the blue is, is the case we're speaking about now.
Okay, that clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Other questions? Then Commissioner, if you would, uh, motion to close the hearing and accept the recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we, uh, close the public hearing and, uh, accept the special assessment of open space case number sixteen dash zero zero one, Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron, Community of Oregon, Clerk's File Number Five Seven Two Zero.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved, seconded, to close the public hearing and approve the request in case sixteen oh oh one. Further discussion? If you hear anything, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you to all. Now we'll, I'll open our second public hearing, much similar, I think, and we'll find out. It's a public hearing to consider special assessment of open space case sixteen oh oh two, Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron, Community of Oregon, Clerk's File Fifty Seven Twenty One. And again, Joe Fenimore, if you could explain this, and especially any differences in our first one.
For the record, Joe Fenimore.
Rob Litters.
This is, it's gonna sound very familiar. Um, this item is, is an application by the tribe for special assessment of open spaceland on about four hundred and ten acres in an EFU zone located on the North Saniam Highway. Um, under ORS three oh eight eight, three hundred to three thirty, the county's required to process the request in the same manner as the Conferencing Plan Amendment. Uh, the matter referred to the hearings officer who conducted a public hearing on December sixteenth. The property is located approximately three miles east of Staton along the North Saniam River, and the majority of the property is identified under your floodplain. Historic use appears to be a mixture of farmland and forested land. Um, governmental agencies were notified. Um, no comments were received. In term, in determining whether to approve the application, three factors must be considered. Um, the first is related to comparing the value of the, preserving the lot as open space versus the costs and consequences that would be incurred when extending urban services to or beyond the property. Or have to expand an urban growth boundary to compensate for any reduction in available available lands. In this instance, the majority of the property is located in the identified floodplain. And since the property is three miles from the state and urban growth boundary, it's very unlikely that urban services will ever be extended to or beyond the property. Based on this information, the cost and consequences on the extension of urban services or unmovable as inventory is negligible. And the second set of factors prevents the request from being denied solely on the fact that there may be a potential loss in revenue. If, if it is determined that preservation of the open space will enhance or protect specific resources, the applicant indicates that the designation will conserve or enhance natural scenic resources, protect air streams and water supplies, promotes conservation of soils, wetlands, and enhances the value to the public of abiding neighboring forests, wildlife preserves, and other open space. The property has been receiving special assessment for farmers under the proposal. It will be special assessed for open space if approved. On the item three states that the granting authority may approve the application with respect only part of the land. That has done the out and withdraw the entire application. Once again, the board has the options of approving the request and granting the open space special assessment on the entire property, approve the request on a portion of the property, deny the request, or take no action at this time. Marion County Planning Commission at their hearing recommended option one, grant the open space special assessment for the entire property. And we'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
Joe, I didn't see a map, and I didn't look everywhere. How does this lay in relation to the previous one?
It is, the previous one was, was up against the state and urban growth boundary on the west side of the city. This, this property is about three miles to the east between, between the, the highway and the river.
These properties aren't, are not adjacent?
They're not touching each other now.
I didn't catch that part. Doesn't make any difference, but I thought they were. All right, thank you. And, and one other thing, just because I don't know that it was clearly stated, both of these, uh, items have been, were heard at, at a hearing before the planning commission with recommended approval. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the record. So...
Mr. Chair, I think, uh, we've got a, um, nobody signed up, I believe, for testimony on this one, but we did have one submission.
Let me make sure that the applicant doesn't wanna speak here at this time first, and then we'll go through.
Do you want, do you want him to go fir- yeah, and then I'll go back to Joe on these?
Please.
Well, thank you. For the record, uh, Michael Karnasch with the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. I just wanted to say about this property, um, it's correct, it's, uh, uh, quite a ways east, um, of the, the first application that we spoke of. It's, uh, about four hundred and twenty-five acres roughly. Unlike the first application, um, this property doesn't have any active ag fields on it. We believe it had been grazed at one time, but, um, right now, it's, it's mainly, uh, forest property. And it's got about, uh, uh, actually over a mile of riverfront on it. Since it does have quite a bit of forest and, um, has, uh, a really, uh, big Scotch broom problem, the priorities for this property are gonna be, uh, number one, uh, control the Scotch broom, cut it and, uh, treat it so that it doesn't come back. And then, secondly, um, do, uh, some very, uh, light thinning on the property to favor the, the native riparian-type species, which would be in, in this area. It would be cedar, um, cottonwood, ash, uh, alder, and then some Oregon white oak.
Michael, just 'cause I'm thinking of it, how, how would this affect river access for the public? Well, are you anticipating that there would be access, or just from the river itself, or how, what, anything change here? That's what I guess I'm really looking for.
Oh, yeah. Uh, nothing would change. Um, currently, the access is, uh, from the river onto the property. There's, of, of course, the public recreation easement. Um, that stays in place, uh, even after, uh, tribal ownership. And, um, yeah, n- nothing changes there.
All right. Any questions? Anything else, Michael?
Oh, I, I just wanted to mention too, the tribal name of the property is Chan Kawan, which means place of salmon.
Well, I like the sound of that, but that's off the subject. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I just wanted to, and I'm not sure if that was, this was commented on earlier or not. I was listening for it, I didn't hear it. But there was a question that was asked at the planning commission that if the land was ever sold, or if it was changed, what would, would happen to it? Would it be like EFU, when it, when it's taxed, and there would be, you know, you'd have to pay some back taxes? And, uh, where is the answer? Now I just lost it. Okay, so as Mr. Person asked, if this type of special assessment will have the same requirement as farm deferral, requiring the property owner to pay a certain amount of back taxes if taken out of the special assessment. And the assessor's office explained that the, if the property is removed from this open space assessment, there would be some type of requirement to pay interest and penalties for the difference saved under the open assessment. So I thought that was important for us to kind of get out there, too, that it's, it's not like this is kind of a free pass, and if things changed in the future, that it would continue. So, um, it's not really a question. I just wanted to put that out there.
All right. Anything else? And Michael?
Yes, Michael.
So just, again, you'll have an opportunity after a few minutes here to, uh, to make any additional comments if you would like, so thank you.
Thank you.
Now, there's no one, as, as I see, has signed up to speak one way or another. We did have one, one written that I started to mention last time, and Commissioner, you wanted to address that a little bit?
Andy Lynn, Joe comes back up, we can just have him, I can go through those questions and have him respond to the best of his ability for the record.
And then, so Joe, if you would, come back, and do you have a copy of the letter from, this is from Ed Dunham? Well, then, Michael, please just rejoin him, 'cause you'll be next afterwards.
Just, just for the record, Mr. Chair, if you allow me to just go through really quick, and I think some of these have already been answered, but, uh, this was submitted by, uh, Ed, I think it's Dunham, uh, out of Staton, Oregon, and his first question was, what is open spaceland? I think you defined that at the very beginning of the last hearing.
Correct.
Uh, for this hearing, do you want to just quickly?
I mean, Rob did that also with, through the assessment. It, it's land that, that's left as open space. It's not, it's not farmed. It's not developed in, in any way. And in doing so, it gets a special assessment.
Number two, how will it be classified? I'm not sure what that...
It'd be EFU.
Once again, the zone stays, stays EFU zone. It just has a different type of assessment on it.
Okay. Does open spaceland, lands mean it's open to anyone for hunting, fishing, and camping like land was years ago before land use controls of the eighteen hundreds?
I can answer that. Um, under, uh, our agreement with, uh, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, um, in, in the purchase of this property, um, the property is open to the public. Anyone wishing to visit the property other than through the, um, the river recreation easement, if they wanna visit the property overland, they, uh, have to apply for a permit with the tribe's Natural Resources Department, who is the manager of the property, but, um, it, it is open for public use.
Open via permit?
Yep, open via permit, thank you.
Are the taxes equal to other landowners with same EFU classification? I think we...
It should be a little, slightly lower.
Right.
Okay. Number five, property purchased outside the original allotted tribe land should be valued and assessed like surrounding lands. That, that's just a statement. Looks like, uh, uh, future gaming activities. Is there any potential for future gaming activities on this property?
Uh, no, no. Um, and, and that's true of all the properties the tribe acquires under the Willamette Wildlife Mitigation Program. The conservation easements that are on the property prohibit the, the development of, of any, uh, structure or activity that, um, could be construed as gaming.
I think before the planning commission, you explained what would happen if the tribe decided not to own land anymore. Who was the next people that would?
Yeah, good question, Joe, thanks. Um, under the terms of the conservation easements, if the Grand Ron Tribe ever decides, uh, that it doesn't want the property anymore, um, it has to offer the property back to BPA and then to the State of Oregon. And then, um, if neither of those parties wants it, then it's gotta offer it to the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs and the Confederated Tribes of Celets. And, um, if, if none of those parties wants it, um, then it, it can be sold elsewhere, but the conservation easement still applies on the property. It's a pertinent to the property, no matter who owns it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Michael?
All right. Any other questions? Michael, last chance for a comment. Anything else you can think of? All right, then, I would appreciate a motion to close and, and whichever way you wanna go.
Okay, Mr. Chair, well, I would move that the board close the public hearing and approve the special assessment of open space in case number sixteen zero zero two, Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron, Community of Oregon.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved, seconded, to close the public hearing and to approve the special assessment in case sixteen oh oh two, Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron. Any further discussion?
All right. Just, maybe we should get a permit sometime and see how the salmon's running over there.
Yeah, actually, we, we'd love to host a tour out at, at either or both properties. Um, it is, it's a great program, and, uh, love for the commissioners to see the results of it.
Thank you.
That, that might be interesting, too, in the spring, by the way. All right, uh, anything else? Then I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Before I say aye, and I will, we, we haven't considered, and I just, there is a, there is a thought goes through my head about taking farmland out of, out of, uh, production. That's a key and actually the number one industry in Marion County. But, uh, especially with the other one, it's phased out slowly, and it doesn't sound like this particular piece was active. But I just want you to know, at least I thought of that. So with that, I'll say aye, and the motion passes, and talk to us in the spring.
Thank you.
All right, so that's the end of our scheduled items this morning. Other than to read the places we'll be together in the, in the coming week. Uh, tomorrow morning, maybe you'll take a little time, Commissioner Carlson, and explain what this is. But we have a, a seven o'clock, uh, gathering to listen to Chan Hellman, and together toward tomorrow in, at the Kaiser Civic Center, nine thirty, Chamawo Road in Kaiser. Anything you'd say about it? I know you're excited about it.
Yeah, I, we, we are excited about it. So the, uh, Marion County Children and Families Commission has been bringing in a series of speakers. We had Vincent Felitti that came on my birthday, November first, and spoke to about five hundred people in the community about the adverse childhood experiences research that's been done by Kaiser Permanente. Powerful, uh, presentation. And, uh, this was something that a team of us went down to a conference on, uh, domestic violence victims' issues and heard these speakers. And so the, the next speaker that we have is Chan Hellman, who, uh, is with the University of Oklahoma and has done extensive research on hope and the role that hope plays in changing people's lives, changing their behaviors. It affects people that we deal with in health services, in mental health services, in public safety services, uh, obviously, a, a number of other, uh, issues that we deal with, homelessness and so forth. Uh, and what's really neat about his presentation is not only has he done the research, but he's developed tools that programs can use to measure changes in hope, which we know a lot of times when people give up, when they become apathetic, they, uh, gravitate towards at-risk behavior. If nothing good is gonna happen tomorrow, then I might as well do all of these, uh, you know, drug use and, uh, other types of, uh, bad things today. So, uh, it's gonna be a really good opportunity to hear from him. Uh, the other thing I would mention is that Fay Fagels played a major role in bringing these folks to our area and is taking advantage of them being here and is training her staff with intensive staff trainings. She reported at our Public Safety Council meeting last night that Chan has been working with her staff, and it's been very well received, uh, in the couple days that he's been here. So that's what I know. So, that's what I know.
Public availability, pretty well?
You know, there were a few more spots that they had at tables that Tammy was letting the council know last night that they could sign up. And my guess is with the weather, if the roads are bad in the morning, you know, there may be some people that don't show up. So I, so I think if anyone wants to contact, just send us an email or just go on the website and look for Marion County, Oregon Board of Commissioners and contact our office and we can hook you up to the right person to get signed up.
So again, that's at seven o'clock to eight-thirty tomorrow, Kaiser Civic Center. I'm sorry to do this, but I know you specifically wanted me to be there, and I hope it isn't just that you're hoping I make some changes.
I hope you will be there.
Oh, I was afraid of that.
We have hope for you.
Is this all it is? All right. Then Thursday, ten-thirty to eleven-thirty, a work session to review, a review of financial reports. That'll be in the Silverman Conference Room, fifth floor, five fifty-five Court Street, Northeastern Salem. Monday is closed in Observatory St. Martin Luther King Day. Tuesday, we're back at it, a work session from nine to eleven, Public Works on Roads and Bridges. And I, I know it'll be interesting, I hope it isn't overwhelming, but we have a lot of need for both, work on both here in the county, I know that. That'll be, again, nine to eleven, Silverman Conference Room, fifth floor, Court, five fifty-five Court Street, Northeastern Salem. Next Wednesday, at nine o'clock, is our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting, and that'll be followed, and that's at nine o'clock, and then at one o'clock, we'll have a Board of Commissioners CAO Executive Session if needed pursuant to our S one-nine-two-six-six-zero and a whole bunch of letters, and that'll be in the Silverman Conference Room, too. So...
You forgot one important date. I think it got missed, the fourteenth?
It's not on my list.
Civil War basketball game.
Oh, I have tickets.
We wanna ignore that.
Well, let's see, let's see how they do. You know, if I could talk about fun things just a little bit, that, the National Champion game Monday night was incredible. You know, one of those ones that starts out, I'm tired of Alabama, I used to root for them as a kid, I'm tired of them, let's be serious. So I'm going Clemson, and they're down fourteen to nothing and look hopeless, and then just start kinda chipping away and keep at it, and pretty soon, the, the fourth quarter, I didn't wanna leave my chair, believe me, that was, that was a fun game. And I had two things, I actually wrote them on your pad when you...
I've got, I've got two or three things, too.
On Detroit, we've addressed, Clemson, we've addressed it. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, okay, well, you know, yesterday I had to leave management update early, and I had a pile of things that I wanted to talk about, so I just thought I'd bring them here since we're here. So, just real quick, so the first thing is, in the mail folder, there was a letter we got on December twenty-first from a group of people about this Dogwood Lane on Little North Fork Road, and I know, Commissioner, you've been working on that, but my question is, has anyone responded? Like, shouldn't we send a letter back if they send us a letter with all those signatures on? Just wondering.
We'll make sure we have, but...
We, we could. They, they came to the state breakfast last, was it last month?
Yes, that's when the letter came.
Yeah, it was before the letter came, they came, we've, we've actually, Deputy Farron has, has gone out and met with many of them. Public Works is revisiting the, the specific spot they talked about, I think in that letter about where the...
Right. I'm just wondering if we ought to send a short letter saying thank you for your letter?
Yeah.
We've done these things, if you have any other concerns, let us know. Would that be all right? And I could give it to Jolene to do that?
And I think they'll know, and I think Jason mentioned it yesterday, too, that they're working on it and working with them, but you're right, let's...
Whenever we get a letter, I always feel like we ought to respond with a letter. And then, Commissioner Grantano, you put a little note on, this is rulemaking for the Department of Forestry, and there are comments that have to be received by five PM on March the first. This is their rule about estimated loss of so many board feet of timber and reduction in jobs and so on. Ought we to be sending a letter commenting on this?
Is that my note or his?
It might be.
Oh, is this your note, Kevin? I just assumed it was Sam's because I couldn't read it.
Because you couldn't read it?
I think it's, I think I pointed, it was pointing, highlighting it was Sam.
Uh huh.
I can't even read my own writing.
So should we send, should we send some comments in? And we have till March the first, if we care.
Do you wanna just take charge of it? Perhaps you can talk to Tash and we can get a note there.
Well, you have a specific issue.
All right, well, why don't I take it and I'll have someone from staff coordinate with us to send comments in by March the first.
Have Barb look at it and see if it's something Sam that you may wanna make comments to, because it talks about the fiscal impact of this new rule and how, and what the loss in board feet's gonna be, and I thought...
Right. I mean, even on principle, we ought to send something in that says this is unacceptable.
I'm just trying, I just don't know if I recall.
Well, they can do a little research on it. We don't have to do it here. I just wanted to, these pink folders go around and we just like initial the corner of it and pass it on and don't do anything with things sometimes, so I just wanted to call those two to our attention.
And I'm in favor of being opposed. Yes, the thoroughness.
I know, I'm your sister, so remember that. And then the last thing, as these came up through AOC, there are available, they're recruiting commissioners to serve on Oregon Parks and Recreation and LCDC and Dogami, Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, Oregon Ocean Policy Advisory Council. Just wanted you to be aware, if you were interested in serving on AOC.
I nominate our chair to serve on LCDC.
That would be so outstanding. You, you have any time to do that? I know you're the ambulance guy now, so your time's a little limited.
That hasn't taken any time, so you know, it's gone very well.
Okay.
You know, that's just tempting, 'cause I just, I'm, I'm just gearing up to go to war against them, but I don't wanna go to war against somebody that I'm part of.
Okay, so you don't wanna be on it?
I don't, no, that, no.
You wouldn't go to war.
So currently Fay Stewart is the, oh, it's LOAC, Local Officials Advisory Committee of LCDC. So Fay Stewart is the chair and Larry Gibbons is the other member.
That's a little different than...
Yeah, they got an opening.
Tim Josie was on, Tillamook County Commissioner was actually on DLCD for some time, and I was talking to him about that, and he says you'll, you'd be too frustrated. It was very hard for him, and he's a lot more calm than I am.
So here's one, here's a community building program that you can go to called Community Oregon. It's a program of healthy democracy and it's trying to bring people together. We'll be at Canita for three days, you could go to that.
Canita's a nice place, but it sounds a little progressive for me.
Yeah.
Anyway, but thanks for thinking of me, I appreciate all that.
You don't need to go to that, just watch the speech from last night.
All right. Oh, I didn't, oh, do you wanna comment on, no, let's not. I, I couldn't watch it, I'll tell you that much.
I'm eating my protein bar, sorry, but the one thing that was said last night that I would totally support was, get involved.
Oh, sure.
Lace up your boots. I think he even said lace up your shoes, but I'd say lace up your boots and...
That's more Oregon, thank you.
Get involved.
All right. Anything else before we get into trouble this morning?
Yep.
All right, with that, I will call this meeting adjourned.